Meeting to order. We're here to direct, to discuss the extension of employment contract for the director of schools. We have a recommendation here. I'll read the recommendation, we'll get a motion on the floor. And at that point, Mr. Doris Jernigan has asked for a PowerPoint presentation on the accomplishments of the school system. And when that's over, I'm sure there's a lot of people here that would like to speak. This is a, this is a special call meeting, so the board has to suspend the rules to do that. So we'll do that at that time, and we'll have to vote on that also. Doris, go ahead.
All right. I was just gonna make the motion to extend the contract to the director of schools of Rutherford County until June the 30th, 2012. That's a one-year extension from his present contract.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
At this time, we'll, we'll start the discussion by having the PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll, we'll allow board members to discuss whatever they want. We'll have asked for suspension of the rules.
First of all, James, I appreciate your compiling the information on the PowerPoint. And it will reflect substantial successes and gains in the system. And I want to make sure that the credit falls directly where it should fall with these folks right over here, and all these principals out here who have done a remarkable job over the years, helping us build this team and put this organization where it is today. You guys have done remarkable. And this is in no way a reflection on Mr. Watson and the previous administration. They too worked hard and got us focused and headed in the right direction. But I will say, what you guys have pulled off is simply remarkable. And though, that will be revealed in this PowerPoint. So James, that said, take it away, please.
Sure. If the board wants me to go slower or repeat anything, or go back, I can do that. So just please let me know. We first, we broke it down into several different categories, starting with what we think is the most important one, which would be academics. This reflects, this slide reflects the achievement scores from the Tennessee Report Card. It's a snapshot of the past few years. '02, '03 was the year before Mr. Gill took over. The district had all Bs. '03, '04 was the first year he was here. But, but that, that, I believe, Mr. Rutherford County, that reflects the previous year, the two Ds and two Cs. Since then, we've had two years of straight As in this area.
Also, James, I might add, in 2006, 2007, we were one of six systems in Tennessee that made all As. Again, way to go, guys.
The next is the same exact information, but it's for the value-added scores. You can see that we had a C, a D, and two other Cs, and then two Ds and two Cs those first couple of years. We went on '06, '07, that was the year that we had perfect scores across the board, straight As. This past year, this past year, we had two Bs and two Cs. And I put a note there that that reflects, the state re-normed the test baseline measurement last year, so they've told us that you cannot compare that year to other years. We still showed growth in every area except for Algebra I, which showed no detectable difference. So, these are other notable advancements in academics over the past seven years. In '03, 11 schools were on target, and that has been reduced to three in 2010. The graduation rate has jumped from 84.7% to 91.3% in 2010. We now have 100% of core classes taught by highly qualified teacher. We accomplished that over the past year, and it's remarkable. On the eighth grade explorer test, we get a lot of questions from the board sometimes about how we compare nationally. For the eighth grade explorer test, we scored above the national average in every category. Achievement District, the district achieved district-wide Saks accreditation this past year, a first for this district and one of only a few school districts in Tennessee that have done that so far. We've added graduation coaches at the comprehensive high schools, added double-dosing credit and credit recovering opportunities to boost the grad rate. We've increased dual enrollment and dual credit offerings for the high schools, secured funding to create the first magnet high school for the district, and launched the IB program at Oakland High School, which is also the first in the county. And the last time I saw it, it was one of only about 15 in the state. Enrollment. In '02, '03, Rutherford County Schools served 28,173 students. This past year, add it 37,512. That's an increase of nearly 9,500 students in seven years, or an average of 1,167 new students each year. Student expenditures during the past seven years, Rutherford County Schools has experienced remarkable academic achievement and growth despite being one of the worst-funded districts in the state based on per-people expenditures. This shows our funding compared to the state average over the past few years. We've never been even close to the state average.
James, hold that thought a second. And that in no way reflects on the county commission, who've worked tirelessly with us to get schools built, to get additions done, to do everything within their power to make this a successful school system. I can't tell you how much I appreciate them, so please don't take exception to that information.
Many other large districts in the state greatly outspend Rutherford County Schools based on per-people expenditures, but our district outperforms all of them according to the standards set forth by No Child Left Behind. There's, this is a information that Mr. Rutherford was able to pull together. Davis County Schools spends the most, $10,495 per student. They have 55 schools on target. Memphis is just behind them, they have 90 schools on target. Hamilton is, has 26. Knox has 28. Montgomery, who spends close to what we spend, and they're just slightly larger than we are, they have four, and then we have three as of this year. The building program is part of the next biggest area that we see attention paid to. Mr. Gill has secured funding for and overseeing the completion of eight new schools and additions and renovations at 12 existing schools during his tenure. That's a list of those. This is another important thing that we thought we'd bring out as far as portables go. We've only had to add 11, or purchase 11 portable classrooms, three of those being singles, and eight double wides during the past seven years.
How many portables we used into the county, James? $140 or something like that, 135?
135 now.
We've only added roughly 10 since we've been here.
Achievements in the building program. Successfully convinced the county commission to reverse its decision to fund Oakland Middle and Whitworth, but Cannon Middle School, so that they could open in August of 2010. The completion of both schools-
James, hold that thought. Thank you, Jeff Jordan, for helping us pull that off, Doc Bullen, the rest of you guys. Jack Black walked in, Jack changed his vote. Appreciate you having foresight to do that, Jack. When we open those schools in August, that'll be a source of profits for county to come for 60, 70, 80 years. So, thank you guys for that.
By opening those new middle schools, Mr. Gill has fulfilled the district's long-term grade structure vision for an A5, 6A, and 912 school system. He has successfully negotiated with MTSU, State of Tennessee, and the Christie-Houston Foundation to secure funding for improvements in our campus school, which allowed the district to maintain operation of that school. Successfully negotiated with the city of Murfreesboro for sewer service to Rockville. Advocated to the board and the county commission to purchase excess land at three future school sites, which allowed the county to sell the unneeded acreage at a profit for funding future building projects. Initiated cost-saving measures including more efficient school designs, geothermal heating and cooling, metal roofs, lighting upgrades, and then the lighting sensors that we're in the process of doing now.
I'm proud to say, through Gary Clardy's help, we're building schools safer than anyone, saving enormous amounts of money on our electrical and utility expenditures. And that was, you know, an effort of three or four of us to see that through, Gary, and I appreciate you.
Also, in the maintenance department, implemented the safety program to ensure all workers practice the latest safety precautions and their duty duties. The program has a financial benefit by reducing workers' costs. These are teacher and staff resources, and these, these things fall under both human resources and the instruction department. We now have a, hold an annual teacher recruitment fair that's hosted by the district. It's been held for the past three years. Implemented assist training for all new teachers. Assist training is used for teachers that have zero or three years' experience, and has been, has received good marks from those teachers, so they have some sort of backing in their early teaching experience. The district has hired instructional facilitators who've worked as mentors for all new teachers. We now offer an online application process for potential employees. Extensive background checks have been implemented on Mr. Gill. We've done it on all new employees and volunteer coaches. Created a leadership academy to prepare those in the administration pipeline. Those are, you know, teachers and even assistant principals that are on the track to become a principal one day. Initiated professional learning communities in all schools. Created principal cohort groups which meet four times a year. The district has offered multiple trainings for principals with Bob Akers. Hosted annual DI conference, offering national-level training for approximately 1,000 teachers each summer. School safety. Mr. Gill has continued to expand the partnership with Rutherford County, with the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. During that time, he's developed universal emergency procedures that are reflected in the flip charts that all employees get. Mr. Gill put together a committee about six years ago to, made up of emergency personnel, police, fire, principals, board members, to look at every emergency procedure that we have in schools and figure out what is needed, and then made those universal, so that we can train as a district, and that everyone is on the same system if there was an emergency. The RCF Safety Program is now modeled by other districts across the state. The state actually had other districts who came out and met with us here, because they wanted to see how we, how we accomplish this sort of program, and they want to use that as the model for the others. The SRO Program recently earned a national award for safety. Safety weeks are held each semester for employees to practice these procedures. We've hired a Safe Schools Manager to administer the program, and that person also seeks grants to further the program. We use the Safe School Grant funds to purchase Nextel phones for all administrators, establish heat guidelines for athletes, and held annual training, and hold annual trainings for coaches each summer. The district has purchased digital cameras for all school buses. Under Parent Involvement and Communications, Mr. Gill has created a parent advisory council that meets each semester with the director. The board is aware that we've included the school messenger notification system for all schools and for the district use. We've launched the employee newsletter, RCS News and Notes, established a daily report to board members, worked with county general to televise board meetings and work sessions, initiated a spotlight on education at board meetings to showcase various academic achievements. And then this, this slide reflects Mr. Gill's evaluations and his contract history, and this is the final slide of the slideshow. Mr. Gill has an outstanding performance record based on past evaluations from the board. In 2007, the board gave Mr. Gill a combined score of 4.86 out of 5, or a rating of 97.2%. In 2008, the board's combined score for Mr. Gill was 4.83 out of 5, or a rating of 96.6%. As far as contract history, original contract was grant, was approved on May 2nd, 2003, and ran from, from May 2nd, '03 to May 1st of '05. Extended on April 15th through April 15th, 2007. On May 16th, '06, it was extended through June 30th, 2009. And January 17th, 2008, it was extended through June 30th, 2010. And the last one was on June 4th, '09, and it was extended to the current limit, June 30th, 2011. Of those four, three of those were during election years, '04, '06, and '08, and they were approved before the elections. That's all the information that I put together, but I could probably answer other questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Jernigan?
Pretty outstanding accomplishments for the board and the director and the county commission, for me. I know there's some people here that may want to speak. This is a special call meeting, the board has to suspend the rules for that to occur. So I'm leaving it open to Ms. Jernigan.
I wish to move that the rules be suspended, allowing those who wish to speak to do so. They are the stakeholders, as we are stakeholders, and we should hear from our stakeholders.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Blair?
I'm going to vote to suspend the rules, but this is a deviation from what we've done in the past, and we are setting a precedent here for suspending the rules.
I disagree with you. There are times we have suspended the rules. Sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. Mr. Kelly usually asks to suspend the rules, and we have suspended them at times and times we have not. Am I incorrect on that? Somebody correct me if I'm wrong?
There have been times in my tenure that we have suspended the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Jernigan. Anyone else? Call roll, Joyce.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Donald Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Doris Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Grant Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
I'd like for you to limit your time to three minutes. Normally, at a, at a regular meeting, we have a yellow form, and you're limited to three minutes. I'm gonna try to hold you to that three minutes, although I understand sometimes we do let people go a little bit longer. I hope you'll try your best not to do that. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Dr. Bullen?
My name's Bob Bullen, I live 144 Cherry Lane. That's Cherry Lane by the campus school. As elected members, particularly on the school board, you're constantly besieged by people who are complaining, and you don't get to hear the good things. When things are good, people are generally quiet. I'm here to tell you that this has been the most successful school board, along with your immediate predecessors, of any school board in the history of Rutherford County. You don't hear that enough. Everything that was up there today is a credit to this school board, the previous school board, this superintendent, and the previous superintendents. Times have never been better in Rutherford County for schools, and you people need to sit back and reflect for a moment today on what you have done. Just a few things that I have noticed over the time. The recruitment of teachers, absolutely excellent. The central office staff's the better we, best we've ever had. It's a, a working team that keeps you informed, that, that works so well. They're professional people. And service programs have improved dramatically. Rutherford County's always had a good principals, but right now, we have a team of principals that are absolutely professional. They work together, they work with the director of schools. We have a wonderful group of assistant principals. We have a superintendent who demands that they do their job, and he adds the courage that a lot of public officials don't, that if you can't do your job, get out of the way, and we'll put somebody else in that can. Now, you can go on and on with the test scores. We're building the best schools. All of those things that you have seen up there. The commission is delighted with the way this board has done. This board has been terrific. They've sent budgets that, that are understandable. You keep up with the money, you make it easy for us. You did this year what the naysayers in, in the county said couldn't be done. We've built two schools, we're opening a magnet school, and we're doing it without a tax raise. It's all because of the leadership that's been on this board, and the leadership has been in director's chair. Now, this is not about, this issue today is not about who's gonna have power on the board. It's not just about the director. It's not about teachers. It's not about school bus drivers or anybody else. It's about the entire system. We have established a winning team in Rutherford County. We have built a reputation that we are the best county school system in the state of Tennessee. What we want now is a continuation of a winning team. We want more than that. We want a winning culture, a winning tradition, so that in a few years, as every face in here disappears and new ones are here, that we have a smooth transition. Those that follow us will say, the ones that came before us have built a marvelous system, we're going to make it even better. And how do you do that? You do that by establishing a winning culture. No one in the system is more important than the system. No person on the board is more important than the system. No director is more important than the system. There are two types of people in public, in public office. Those who create problems and those who solve problems. This board has been a problem-solving board. Now we've hit a bump in the road. Hopefully, as mature adults, you're gonna work this out, because that's all the commission is asking, is that we continue having a winning tradition. And beyond that, we establish a winning culture, so that those that follow us will continue to do what is being established now. In conclusion, when you look at a school board member, there are only three things that guide your decisions. You can make a list of seven, eight, nine, or 10, but there are only three that guide your decision. The first one is, is it good for the entire system? The second one is the one that's related to the first. Is it good for children? If it's good for children, it's good for the entire school system. And the third one is the one that you must always manage. You have to keep in mind the public input. You've got to produce a product that the public likes, you've got to produce a system that works well, because they pay the bill. The commissioners are here, I thought, Mr. McAdoo, Commissioner McAdoo, we thought we would never see the day when seven or eight commissioners would show up on a rainy Saturday morning to support the board and support the director. They usually came with knives. So what I'm saying is, work this out, solve this, keep this going. This is like balancing jello. Right now, we've got a perfect mold. Everything's holding in place, but there's a little lump that's trying to slide out, and we need to put that back in together. So I'm urging you to sit back and reflect and think about how good you've been, how great we are, and how we're going to continue this in the future. Don't screw this up. Keep us going. Let's have this winning tradition, so that when people come in the future, teachers will be proud of being in the system, principals will be proud of where they are, school kids will be proud of where they are, they'll get a good enough education that they'll go on to college, many of them will come home again and stay here. A good school system is good for the economy. A good school system's good for everybody in the system. So I'm saying, thank you for letting me go over my time. Thank you for being good to me all these years. It's been wonderful associating with you. This is a great school system and great people in it. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bullen.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name is John Rogers, I live at 2921 Cherry Blossom Lane, and it's always my luck to follow Dr. Bullen. What he neglected to say was the fact that he has been the chair of the Health and Ed Committee for the County Commission for, I believe, over two decades now, so there's nobody that works more closely with the school board than Dr. Bullen. But I, I wanted to, today, to echo some of the comments that he made. Obviously, we have outstanding achievements by our school board. We have just a fantastic record. Again, we don't, we want to continue that. The commission has, I've, I've been on the commission now for eight years, six of those, I served on the Health and Ed Board. I've seen a tremendous direction that the school board is going, been really encouraged by the progress that we've made. I think we've done a fantastic job, and I want to reaffirm my support for Mr. Gill and the, and the job that he's done. He certainly hasn't done it alone, but I don't know if we could have done it without him. He has done a fantastic job. He's been a tremendous advocate for education in Rutherford County, and I think by all means, he, he needs to continue on in this position, and for as long as my children, for sure, in, in Rutherford County. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you how great a job Mr. Gill's done. I think we all know the job he's done. I wanna say, I hate to see Mr. Wise and Mr. Jernigan leave the board. Appreciate your time and service. We're gonna have at least two new members on the board by September. That's, that's where, the point I'm gonna come from. You either extend this contract pretty quickly, if not now, as soon as a new board is on, or you start looking for a new superintendent. And I've served on the budget committee for eight years now, and on the health and ed for four, and I'm worried about who our next superintendent could be. No offense to whoever our new board members are, I don't care who you are, you're not gonna have your, be, be able to hit the ground running. It's gonna take you a while to learn the system. If this was a two- or three-year budget, contract extension, I'd be up there speaking against it, more than likely. But I don't think, with at least two new members, and only seven school board members, not like the county commission with 21, there's only seven. Two of seven could be more than two of seven, and those people, without any knowledge of the experience and all, of being on the school board, picking our next superintendent, that scares me, is being a health and ed and a budget committee member. I, I think the superintendent's done a good job, but I, but I also think that we ought to look awful hard at who the next one is after him, whenever that is, whether that's a year from now, two years, or five years now. And I want the best people possible picking that person, because we've gotta work with him over at the courthouse. And so I just, I just urge you to, don't even consider two or three years, but give them a year, and give these new members a chance to get up to speed before they start making decisions. Because that's, that's, I've been put in that position in the past, and that was just, just, just the wrong place to be. So that's, that's my point in its entirety. This isn't anything different than this time of year. You've got great knowledge, and these two veteran school board members, use that knowledge, and let them, and let them vote on this, and move this forward for this one year, and by that time, your new members will be accomplished enough to make an informed decision, not come in first meeting, new superintendent, or not a new superintendent. That's the most important decision you guys make. You vote on the budget every year, but your biggest job, in my opinion, is picking who sits in that seat. And if the wrong person gets in that seat, we've all got a mess on our hands. And so that's all I want to ask you to do. Give them one year, give these people a chance to be able to make an informed decision. Thank you. Thank you. Will Jernigan?
My neighbor, I didn't hear him identify himself. Make sure it's-
I'm Will Jernigan, I live at 3923 Shacklet Road, and I represent District 3 on the County Commission. I lived across the street from Grant Kelly for about 40 years.
Don't hold that against him.
We're sorry.
And I'm proud to say I taught him in school, like Will. I don't know if I taught you anything, but, anyone else?
My name's Aaron Holiday, I live at 2034 Abingdon Drive in Laverne, and I am a candidate to try to live up to the reputation of Mr. Rick Wise in Zone 1 for the Rutherford County School Board. No matter what happens today, I certainly want to say to the citizens of Rutherford County that we are committed in Rutherford County to excellent schools, and my commitment is shown since the first of the year by attending these school board meetings, getting to know the gentlemen who are on the school board and will remain on the school board. We have enjoyed conversations and getting to know one another, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve with them. Rick Wise has been a wonderful resource to me and an excellent mentor. Wayne Blair, as well, has given me a lot of expertise and experience. It was his suggestion, Aaron, as soon as possible, be a part of the school board meetings. You are welcome. Don't just watch them on TV, you gotta come and see how it works all together. And, you know, I've had phone conversations with Mr. Doris Jernigan. It's certainly a, a strong interest of mine that the camaraderie and the fair working relationship between the school board and the county commission be maintained, but I certainly also want to highlight the way the director Gill welcomed me into his office back in April, and talked with me about all the issues related to Rutherford County schools, and encouraged me, as I seek to serve the citizens of Rutherford County on the school board. No matter what the decision is today, I'm very confident that Rutherford County schools will continue to be a positive force in our, in our system.
Thank you, Aaron. Chair? Okay. Let Anthony go first, Chair, and then you come, okay?
Anthony Johnson, I'm county commissioner for 10th District. Not gonna try to repeat everything that's been said. I'm in agreement with, with everything that's been said so far this morning. I do want to repeat one thing, and that's how proud I am of the work that all of you have done, working together. But you as a team, you board members have worked with Mr. Gill, you've experienced ups and downs, but you've carried us to where we need to be now and in the future, and I'd like to see that continued. And one way of continuing that is to support Mr. Gill and his endeavors with you guys, and just continue the good job you're doing. You've done it, it's, it's proven, the record has been shown today. Not all of it, but most of the record has been shown today. It's obvious we're on the right track, we're staying on the right track. What you're facing today is nothing different than you've done in the past. It's past practice of extensions. So I urge you today to keep on the right track and approve this extension today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I'm Truman Jones, and I live at 5963 Manchester Pike. And I'll address the one aspect that involves me and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, and the safety of our children, and the teachers, and the principals, and everybody that's involved with the school system. We started the School Resource Officer Program in 1993, and we had a number of, I, I don't know if there's any board members that are presently here that were serving at that time. if there's any board members that are presently here that were serving at that time, but I know a number of you were principals when we started. And you remember how things were and how things were getting to be at that time, and we wanted to address that problem. And a number of you that were principals and are still principals here bid on to the opportunity that we were going to give and work with each and every one of you, the superintendent, the principals, and everybody involved, including the parents. It was one of those situations that everyone felt had to be done at the time. And not only were we able to do it, but we were able to become the most successful program in the United States. And that was because of cooperation, of working together. We set up a program that we felt that could not fail because everybody was on board with the way it was to be set up. And since that time, working with our Superintendent, Harry Gill, the program has become even more successful because that's, he was willing to work with us on all the new programs that we were able to bring in, all the training, which is, can be disruptive at times, and it takes a lot of work by the teachers and the principals to carry it on. But since he has been so supportive of us, this last year, we won a national award again. And people come in from all over, not just inside the state of Tennessee, but they come in from all across the nation just to see how in the world could this program be so successful in a community that's no bigger than what it is right now? And the reason being, and believe me, we've got problems. They're cropping up every day in our communities, and if they're in our communities, they're going to be in our schools, and we're seeing it. And the only reason that our schools are as safe as they are now is because the cooperation between Harry Gill, the principals, the teachers, and all the parents, and law enforcement. That's the only reason that we're able to bring that about. And to be perfectly honest with you, it scares me to think that we may have some type of disruption in the cooperation that we have, someone coming in and not being able to understand what we're offering and being able to accept it as it is and being able to be, able to go with whatever we offer. And we'll sit down, I mean, Harry and I talk almost every day about the problems and what we can do to make our community safer. And I'm talking, when I say "community," I mean in our education community, because that's where our future lies, and there's nothing more important than the safety of our kids. And I've seen our kids be absolutely, some frightened to go to school in the past because the pecking order was from the bottom up. The people who had the negative influence on them were beginning to win out. That doesn't happen anymore. People are absolutely, the students are absolutely delighted to go to school, kind of like we were in the 50s, if anybody's as old as I am. I don't want to stay up here too long because I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I really do ask you and I beg you to make sure that we're going to keep going forward with our schools, and nothing is more important than when our kids go to school, they're going to be in a very safe environment. And I'm asking you to extend Superintendent Harry Gill's contract today, and I think it would be one of the most responsible votes that you could ever have. Thank you.[861.57][861.57](Applause).
My name's Jay Black. I'm the Commissioner of District Two, live at 3388 East Jefferson Pike. It's hard act to follow behind a doctor and a lawyer here, but I'm on a banking loan same lines as they are, and I got several calls from my constituents when this issue come about, and they pretty much so told me to get my tail up here and support Mr. Gill. So, that's what I'm doing, in agreement with every speaker up here today, and thank you.[903.32][903.32](Applause).
I'm Jeff Jordan. I live at 507 Woodmore Drive here in Murfreesboro, right behind Bellwood School. I represent the 13th District on the County Commission, where the snow falls and piles, you don't even have to shovel it up. It's, all the streams run clear. It's a beautiful District 13th.[929.32][929.32](Laughter). Dr. Burns is my school board member, and I'm proud to say that, except perhaps between 19, the late 60s, 68, 69, and 72, when Holloway closed and Truman Francis opened, and we closed a number of high schools in the county and opened Riverdale and Oakland, except for that period of time. I can't think of another time where more has happened and is about to happen this fall, as far as turning, moving students, transferring, improving opportunities, which is really what it's all about. There's an outstanding staff over here, and I'm, I tell you what, I mean that. And I think a solid commission and a solid school board, without question, and I'm going to come back to that in just a minute, that these things that are going to happen this fall would, I think, likely, I think, would have happened without any one of us, I believe, except Mr. Gill, who, considerable vision, and I realize carrying out what you all wanted carried out. I think it's going to be a great thing. Now, when I first started teaching back in the Dark Ages, when we put the homework on stone tablets and things of that nature, and Mr. Blair was in my classroom, which is why he's here today.[1022.38][1022.38](Laughter). I started paying close attention at that time to school board issues and superintendent issues, and we've had a lot of outstanding people serve, both on the board and as superintendent. However, a relationship, I believe Dr. Bullen is right, and he's twice as old as I am. I don't believe we've ever had a relationship as healthy and as forward-looking with vision between you all and the commission and the general public, and certainly the staff over here that we have right now. I think it's been terrific, and I'd like to continue that. One other thing, October until February of this past year, I was pleased to be welcomed by numerous principals all over the county and touring their building, usually an hour, sometimes two. Commissioner Johnson went with me, Dr. Bullen went with me, Commissioner Ely went with me, Mr. Clardy went with me sometimes, but at any rate, I got around to all 43 of them, and Dr. Ash at Central Magnet spent three hours with me touring the building again and explaining how the $2 million is going to be spent over there, 2.4, I think, to renovate that building and make it a true Magnet School. You all have got some terrific people out there doing a terrific job. I appreciate your time. Thank you.[1126.83][1126.83](Applause).
I'm Joe Frank Jernigan. I rep Sixth District. Mr. Donald Jernigan's my school board member. Been on the County Commission 12 years and appreciate all the gentlemen here that's on the school board. Dr. Bullen's talking about the budget and stuff. I've been on it 12 years, and I do know the last, ever since Mr. Gill's come on, I think the board and the commission has worked as well as it ever has. And if you go back and look at what's been built and done, I think that's the truth. Representation. Thank you.[1175.83][1175.83](Applause).
My name is Alan McAdoo, and I stay at 1111 Southeast Broad, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 18th District Commissioner. And Dr. Bullen stated one thing that is correct. The last school board meeting I attended on Saturday was a mess. I thought we'd have to call Truman Jones in just to get us out of there.[1206.33][1206.33](Laughter). And the next thing I know, we were taken to court, and it was just a total mess that entire year. But I stand before you, not representing the District 18, but being a citizen of Rutherford County, a taxpayer. All the citizens of Rutherford County have got a big investment in this new program that you came and sold to us, on the Magnet School, the two middle school. And as Director Gill know, I'm sitting in the hottest seat because I had to sell it to the 18th District. 18th District would be the one that would be bussed the most, and it's just a mess. From walking to a school, and then you talk about being bussed. You do not make that type of investment, and then all of a sudden, you want to change in the middle of the screen. You do, you want the same person in charge, not with an extended contract hanging over his head. As far as Director Gill, he works 24/7. My phone would recognize that. And I am very proud of the school board because we have accomplished a lot in the last several years. I mean, a lot. And you have, you see by the reflection here this morning that you have done a great job. So, why can't we extend this contract? In the fall, this project is not complete. It's not complete at all, especially in my district. And we don't, we just don't need anything hanging over us to curtail that this is not going to be successful. Anything that I needed from Director Gill and his staff, they were willing to give it to me, and that's made a big difference in my district, a very big difference. Now, if we go into the fall and we're not together, it's going to be a mess, and Director Gill know that. And I hope the school board would realize that. I'm for this project, and as these commissioners would tell you, I'll watch a penny to death. I'll strain it, and Director Gill would tell you that, too. So, we got this big investment. We need to keep everybody intact and moving forward if we're going to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAdoo.[1357.53][1357.53](Applause).
I live at 2722 Queens Court. Mr. Jernigan is my school board rep. I retired after 35 years with, working for Rutherford County Schools, and I guess I'm just amazed that this type of thing even come up. When Mr. Gill took over in the system, we were in a real state of turmoil. Things just really weren't good. The morale was really terrible. Performance was really bad. The thing I guess that I've admired with Mr. Gill over the time is he's had guts enough to do what it needs to be to get, you know, where we are today. I have the utmost respect for you seven men. I worked with you before, and I appreciate your support. But I guess I'd like to approach it from the blue collar part of it, you know, not the political part and what the public sees, but on the other side, there's never been, I worked for a lot of superintendents, and I've been fortunate to go across the state of Tennessee to evaluate a lot of schools and school systems. And I've never seen a director of schools that could solidify a system and hire the people that he's had. Leadership is getting people to believe in what you do and getting people to follow you, and that's what he's done. The principals and the administrative staff, everybody that works for Harry Gill knows one thing. He's going to give you the position and let you go, and he's going to let you do your work. When I worked for him, we were free to do whatever we need to do. And again, if, he always had the utmost respect for you. If you didn't do a very good job, he had enough respect that he wouldn't call you out in public, but that conference room in his office was used more than one time for a lot of reasons, but it was that type of thing. He was always a visionary. But the reason we need to keep Harry Gill here is because of our kids. There's never been, I've never worked for a superintendent that supported kids any more than he has. Everything he's done here has been because of the kids. It's not because of politics, it's not because of anything else, it's because of the kids here. And I think that you can talk to these principals, his support and the staff that he's built, the people that he's built. I don't know why you would even take a chance of letting a man of his caliber get away from us. He could go anywhere in the state of Tennessee today. Anybody that's taken the system and took it to where it is today, he mentioned to me ago, there's probably only six schools in the state of Tennessee that had straight A's. I guarantee you, if you don't think that Metro would double his salary to get him, all these other systems, I tell you, if you've ever been around a superintendent that you bring in new, it's been disastrous. We've seen that here. We've had superintendents, and some of you worked with them, have just basically been disastrous, just because they didn't understand the culture, the way he works with the County Commission, the way he works with you folks, the way he works with his people here. You know, I respect every single one of you, but I really just can't understand why you would even take a chance to let a man of his caliber get away from you. We've got, you know, Rutherford County's got the best school system anywhere in the state of Tennessee, probably, you know, anywhere else. Why would you take a chance to bring somebody in that would knock us off the top of the mountain? You're not going to find anybody better than him, you know? So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thanks.[1598.21][1598.21](Applause).
I'm Kelly Goustey. I'm the principal at Brown's Chapel, and it's hard to follow you, Dr. Bullen. I feel like I'm back in graduate school. You were about the best teacher I ever had, so I'm a little nervous standing up in front of him, but I am speaking on behalf of the principals in Rutherford County, who I've had a lot of phone calls and meetings with folks over the last week since the news of this vote came up, and this is a compilation of our work on behalf of the director. As dedicated members of the Rutherford County school system, we take tremendous pride in the fact that we are known by others as a beacon of success despite unprecedented growth and strained budgets. That is due in part to your tireless efforts and contributions toward the achievement of every stakeholder in our schools. Thank you, Board, for that dedication. Harry Gill Jr. is the driving force that has provided the vision and expertise to lead our system to its current pinnacle. He has set the standard that motivates the best of everyone, administrators, students, and teachers alike, to achieve. Our achievement and value-added scores prove that he knows how to set goals and surpass them. Initiatives such as graduation coaches, credit recovery, reading specialists in non-Title One schools, and instructional facilitators have had positive impact on student performance. He's built relationships with county commissioners, paving the way to a forward-thinking building program, serving the needs of a growing population. The coming years promise many challenges for educators, the implementation of new standards...[1694.65][1694.65](pause) I've lost my place. Rising scores and graduation requirements for NCLB as well as leaner budgets. Mr. Gill is the leader, who will see that we meet these challenges head-on and continue on our path to moving beyond excellence. It's not easy to be on Mr. Gill's team. Working for a leader who's at the top of his game requires that we all set our standards at the highest level and not be satisfied with our last win. We always have our eyes on the next challenge, knowing that he holds us accountable while supporting us in all endeavors to succeed. He's a proven leader with 36 years of loyal service to this system, and that kind of commitment is certainly rare, and coupled with his impeccable record, he deserves our loyalty in return. We urge the Board to vote to extend Mr. Gill's contract, ensuring the security of Rutherford County school system. Leadership is everything. Without it, the system will suffer and lose the focus that we've worked so hard to gain in the past years. As administrators, we would expect the Board to speak on behalf of the people who place their trust in you upon election. You are our voice, and we depend on you to make decisions that benefit our children. We're certain that you want your vote to reflect the commitment to your communities and preserve the success of Rutherford County schools, and we believe that that vote should be a resounding show of support for our director, Harry Gill Jr. Thank you.[1780.41][1780.41](Applause).
It's, Mr. Gill is a man of integrity...
It's, Mr. Gill is a man of integrity. He's also accessible. He's been a great boss for the last five and a half years for me. And of course, I know all the board members personally, I know that you're friends of mine. So I just want to say a couple things very straight to you today, you know, from my heart. Although, you know, I'm kind of an outsider. I'm Gary Clardy, Assistant Superintendent from Burns, Tennessee. The thing, we have a lot of work still to accomplish here with the school system. Just from the building perspective, we still have 135 portable classrooms. We still have some overcrowded schools. We've got a high school to build. We own our building plan. We've got Eagleville Edition and an elementary school. And I'm sure there will be more stuff after that. Those have not been funded. We need to get the design started on the high school at the end of this year. That design hasn't been funded. For our plan to move ahead, we need some strong leadership. And to make my main point is, I'm very concerned about Mr. Gill's effectiveness with such a short, limited contract for a year. That's the effectiveness of his leadership, the effectiveness of my leadership, of all the assistants' leadership, of your leadership, of maintenance's leadership, school administration's leadership, just leadership in general and effectiveness in general. It's, when you get down to such a short term, it's very easy to become a lame duck, where you're just in the job. You're not really accomplishing anything because people are standing around waiting to see what's going to happen next. So, and, and, you know, I think you can all relate to that as you get down to a short-term on a board member or close to election or whatever, or you get down to close to the end of the job. Out of 45 years that I've worked, Mr. Gill is the most effective leader, a man of integrity. He's not afraid to call a spade a spade. When you get that stuff out of the way, then you can go do your job. So I guess what I'm asking the Board today is to, please extend his contract. Don't let him only have a year out there so he does become a lame duck. Don't cripple his effectiveness here in the system. We've all worked hard together for the last several years to get where we are now. Let's keep the momentum going. Let's get the things done that need to be done.
I did not come here with the intent to say anything, but I've kind of like been at church and had the altar call, so I'm here. I'm Rhonda Holton. I'm at 2831 Mount Vernon Road, Chapel Hill, Tennessee. Like Mr. Clardy, I am the outsider. I'm also the principal at Eagleville School, but I do own property in Rutherford County, so I do pay property tax, so I, you know, have a little right to say something. I would just like to say that living in another county and working in another county, I can see the difference. I spent 20 years in Marshall County. I could have brought you three papers this morning that are, I'm behind on reading, that the front page is the school system. And it is each and every week because it's such a mess. They've gone through, I think they're on their fourth superintendent and couldn't make any decisions on that, so they just kept somebody that was in the system. It's a complete disaster. I have also served on the school board, so I know how that can be also. So I, I just want to say that we have a great system. I don't think anybody can disagree with that. You look at the PowerPoint, it's an outstanding system. We go in the fall to the lead conference, and Mr. Odom can tell you the things that they're presenting that are new and great to do. We've been doing them three years. We're already, it's, it's, I didn't even go last year, because everything we do is so already ahead of everyone else. It's the best professional development of any system I've ever been in. The leadership is the best in every area, from human resources, Mr. Odom's office, the financial office, I need some money, Jeff. And all of that is due to Mr. Gill and your insight, because what you've done is put together great folks. You know, we don't ask Mr. Gill every question. He put these people in place. But these, the people that are here are outstanding. Nothing about this county is, you know, in trouble anywhere as far as education is concerned, from what I can see. I can point you plenty of counties that are a disaster. And my mom and daddy always said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I don't think it's broke, I think it's great. I'd like for you to continue Mr. Gill's contract. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Looks different seeing you up there.
Well, Rick.
I don't know if I had the guts to get up there.
It, it seems that we've gone through an evaluation, we being all the board members and the director. The things that we do are noted, the things that we do are appreciated. I don't think we've ever had people come to a board meeting from the, this many anyway, that I, that you didn't hear me say thank you. And to each and every one of you all, as stakeholders in Rutherford County, as a board member, I thank you for being here and what you've done and what you mean to us. We are advocates for education, and if we aren't, we shouldn't be in the jobs that we're holding. You know, you're, every one of you all has an advocacy responsibility. I'm going to leave the Board, I am a lame duck. I am not a dead duck. I will be a board member until the last day of August. And I will do what I think is right and proper for schools. So that's why I make this motion that I presented this morning. When I went to Rick and asked and said, we need to do this, I had so many thoughts, so many of them have been covered in the PowerPoint. But I have concerns, and I know that you all have these same concerns. One, we're still trying to advance our program. We are not satisfied, we should never be satisfied, until every student who goes through our school system is successful. My greatest concern has been, and I've expressed it many times, how do we reach the child that doesn't care? We can't afford children who don't care. Because we care, they are going to have to speak. Our project, we're going to have to assure their successes. Some things that I see facing us and why we, and I think why we need some long-range capability in the leadership. The American Diploma Project, things that are going to add rigor to our school system. We need to be in place with our planning as far as how we're going to advance the, the children in this system. They're going to have to start as kindergartners, acquiring greater knowledge than they've ever acquired before. I don't know that much about the American Diploma Project, I just sense that children are going to be challenged beyond anything they've been challenged to before. Race to the top. I think our Board had a lot to do with the state's success. We applied for it, we showed an interest. I, I'd just like to think that the things that we're doing are things that are going to help our totals, our, our state as a whole. I remember just a few months ago, when our Board sat down with the Saks accreditation team, and we came and, as a group, and said things to those people that I think they went, went away from here saying, gee whiz. I, I sensed they hadn't heard those kinds of thoughts before. Those are things that we still need to keep applying to our system and advancing. It's been a pleasure serving. It's been one of the greatest things, greatest experiences that I've had in life. Oh, I've done some things, I've flown helicopters, I've just, I've been so privileged to, to experience so many things in life. And I think this is one of those things that goes right at the top of, well, I'm glad I did that. I've enjoyed working with Harry Gill. You know, I went to him the night he was elected Director of Schools. I was the one vote against him that night. And it wasn't a vote against Mr. Gill, it was a vote that we had not completed the selection process. We were cutting it one step short, I thought. But thank goodness, six other people overruled me, so that was good. That was good. So, folks, thank you all for letting me do this. And it is different here, it's a lot more comfortable when you're sitting in that chair and behind that desk and you're secure, they can't get to.
My name is Gary Eeks, I live at 819 Trinity. I'm one of those people Mr. Jordan referred to earlier, a candidate for the school board, Mr. Jernigan's seat, Doris Jernigan's, not yours, Don. I would not have sought this seat had Doris Jernigan decided to run again, because I think you saw what kind of man Doris Jernigan is. And it would be my hope that I could accomplish if, if, if elected. But beside the point, that's not important. My candidacy is the least important thing here today. I have been out, been in the schools, I've been talking to people, and never in my life, 66 years in this community, involved in schools in some fashion, educated to be a school teacher, many friends, teaching, principals, parents, I'm involved in a lot of things where I get to contact people. And the one thing that's impressed me most is not what they've said about Harry, but it's about their principal at their school. We've got the best principal in the world. I hear that about every school that, that I've been exposed to. We love our principal. Our principal's great. I have a 17-year-old daughter who walks down the hall at Seagull as a, she'll be a senior, pardon me, granddaughter, no. You know, that's not right. Not a daughter, but a granddaughter. And she can walk down the hall and say to her schoolteacher, who she had as a freshman, "I love you, Miss O," in passing. And that's amazing to me. We didn't say that when we were kids, now maybe we were afraid to say that, but kids love their teachers by and large. They want to love their teachers, they want to learn, and they love their principals. Parents tell me, oh, she's a great principal, we love her. He's a great principal, we love him. That didn't happen just by circumstance. That is a difficult thing to do, develop a team, build a team that will succeed. It's very difficult. We'd all like to do that. Many of you have been involved in athletics, you'd all like to win, but you don't. But in this case, this county, these kids, these parents have won because of what you've seen exposed on the Board. The credentials that, that we've witnessed today explain to us how successful y'all have been in building this team, allowing Mr. Gill to be the one that puts it together and supervises it. The one thing that, preparing to, to enter this race, the one thing I was really amazed at, and I, I don't think I should have been, but you have no authority outside of this room, you have no authority whatsoever. All of that passes to the school superintendent. So you can see, you've been a part of it, you've designed it, you've organized it, and he's carried out the plan. The old adage of a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush was never more true than as you stand today to make a decision. Mr. Jordan stated it perfectly. I wouldn't want to leave our county tax rate up to the next county commission to walk in on day one and say, hey, we need to raise taxes about 15 cents per hundred or something, you know? That wouldn't fly. I don't think it's a decision that needs to be put aside, delayed. I think it's a decision you need to make, I think you're very capable of making that decision, I think you have all the facts to go ahead and continue with the successes this school system has been exposed to over the last six, 10, 12 years. It's a wonderful school system. I love both the Murfreesboro system and the county system, and for years, the Murfreesboro system stood just a little bit above. But that's not true any longer, so we can all be proud of that. Thank you.
There's no one else, I'd, I'd like to make a little comment. I wasn't going to, because I am a lame duck, and I'm probably a dead duck too, I don't know. I was not a dead duck. But I've had, I've had a lot of calls from, not necessarily people in the community, but people in the school system. And what they've said to me is, Mr. Wise, if you're not going to extend the director's contract, what have we done wrong? I thought we had a good system. And I'll say, you do have a good system, but that's the perception out there. It starts here, and it's the perception on down is, what, what, have we, are we not doing something right, or our test scores bad, or what, what, what's, what's wrong? And I'm not sure that's not from everyone, but the people that I've talked to, I've had that from. So whatever that's worse to, I'll just put that out.
Mr. Gill, you want to make a comment?
First of all, I appreciate everybody being here today. Flattered by all that's been said. And I think many of you obviously do think I'm doing a decent job, and I appreciate that very much. But I really think the real reason you're here is because you're proud of the school system, you're proud of the accomplishments of the school system. I am proud of the fact that I hired these people over here, everyone with exception of Jeff Samving. Jeff, I would have hired you if you'd applied. And that I think, I appreciate Mr. Eeks' comments on the principals. I think I've hired, since I've been here, 34 or 35 principals, and I heard from many county commissioners talking about how wonderful they were, and you guys are. What I am perplexed about, and I appreciated Butch Vaughn's comments, because I felt, I feel right now the same way, I'm, I'm really perplexed what this is all about. Where have we gone, where have I personally gone wrong? Last evaluation I had was virtually perfect, as was the one before that. All we've done since then is opened two brand-new schools, opened a, start a magnet school, produced two more good report cards, furthered the wonderful relationship with the county commission, put new programs in place, I just do wonderful things, and continue to be the envy of most school systems in Tennessee. Now, I'm just confused as to how we've gotten to the point where's, where there's an issue with respect to our contract. I, I don't know what I've done wrong. And as Mr. Eeks said, the frightening thing is, everybody in this room, the way things work, according to the BEP plan of 1991, the school board has one employee, me. The rest of them work for the school superintendent. I don't take that lightly, that's an enormous responsibility. I'm sure there's a lot of people sitting out there right now who are a little bit antsy with respect to what their future holds if something's done to the school superintendent. Now, and should something be done to me, I, I hope that you'll get some kind of commitment that they'll leave those folks do their job. Because they are, in essence, what this school system's about, in, in, in large part, responsible for the success of this school system. Now, if you guys are going to vote me out, or vote not to extend my contract, I sure would like some kind of explanation on what I've done wrong, and where I could have done better, because not only are you letting me down, you're letting these people down, as far as I'm concerned. And again, I go back to, I thank Butch for what he said, about having to make tough decisions, about holding people accountable, about letting people do their job. I don't think there's ever been more harmony in the school system areas right now, where people feel appreciated. And I can assure you, these people out here know I appreciate them, I'm not real sure the school board appreciates me a whole lot, and I don't appreciate it. And so if you-
Go ahead.
I'm finished, Mark.
Terry wants to do it.
I'll just make a few comments. First off, I know as a board member, I'm probably not the best at basically telling the principals. I'd like to tell everyone here that I personally appreciate the job that each one of you do daily, because as Mr. Gill said, you're part of the main reason where we're at today. County Commission members, I greatly appreciate your comments. It's, I know you support us, you know, financially, you've been great doing that for us, but it's, it makes me feel good that you give us the fine comments you made today. Mr. Gill, I think you know how I feel in this, this situation. I appreciate the job you do, and, you know, since this deal's come up, I've been pretty vocal, I'm in favor of it, even though that this is awful. Besides the point, I mean, you and I probably clash more than anybody up there, but at the end of the day, sometimes I'm right, sometimes you're right, but at the end of the day, we, we walk away and move on, and, you know, I hope you continue to stay on, I hope the board members see it that way, too.
It's been an unpleasant meeting, for me anyway, and I think for probably several of us. In fact, in terms of fun factor, it ranks right up there with rezoning. I appreciate the attendance and the comments by the commissioners, the sheriff, the principals, the employees. I don't disagree with anything that was said. I do disagree with the conclusion that you reached, and I've been sitting here trying to think, well, why is that? Why would I disagree with a lot of people who I have great respect for, who have great concern for the system? How would that happen? And what I've come up with is that I have a different perspective, that I have the perspective of a board member, one of Mr. Gill's seven employers. You asked, Harry, what have you done wrong? That's a misinterpretation from my standpoint of what we're doing today. You haven't done anything wrong. I mean, you're right, you've gotten excellent evaluations, I've told you personally, and I'll say it now publicly, I support you that after the election, after we follow the appropriate process, I will be happy to vote for an extension, so I hope we can all get away from the idea that this is somehow a referendum on Mr. Gill's performance. I mean, I guess I can understand why it appears that way, but for me, it really isn't. Personally and as a board, I think we have a history of supporting you almost a hundred percent. I mean, there's precious little in the six years since I've been on the board that I haven't backed you on. And I think that is true for most of us on here. So, there's no doubt in my mind about your performance, and the testimonials and the PowerPoint and all of that, just simply support that idea. So, I mean, that's one thing, I really think that we should not interpret this as a referendum on your performance. Couple of the speakers talked about the need to leave a system in good shape for our successors, and I agree wholeheartedly with that, and that's really sort of the main point that I want to make. None of us are indispensable. In fact, a wise person told me the other day, the graveyard is full of indispensable people, and that's true for the board, it's true for, it's true for all of us. We decided, I think, as I thought, as a board, a few years ago, before we would make decisions about the director's salary or the director's contract, that we would go through an evaluation process, and as you saw from the slideshow, we have not done that since two thousand and eight. As Harry points out, it's not his fault we haven't evaluated, and it's not, it's the board's fault. If we had known, or at least if I had known, that there was, you were interested in extending your contract, it would have been helpful to hear it more than three or four weeks ago, so we could have done that process. The problem is now, we've gotten this huge rush to get this done before the election. In fact, we are in this, not unprecedented, but very unusual situation of having a Saturday meeting, because it's the only day that legally we could make this decision, because we had such late notice about the desire for a contract extension, the only way we could meet the requirements of state law was to meet today. To me, that's a pretty indication that we're in a rushed process. For no good reason that I can tell, Mr. Gill has more than a year left on his current contract. It's not like we're going to go in there and box his office up after this meeting if you don't get an extension, I mean, that's a pretty long time, how many jobs in society to get a year guarantee of employment? You know, the state just passed a law giving teachers two weeks, you know, our notification day for non-renewed teachers, untenured teachers is now May fifteenth. So, I don't personally see it as any sort of indication of what we'll do down the road if, if today we say, "Slow down, we need to leave a process in place for the next one." And if we circumvent or abandon that process now, we've not done that, we've gone back to the days when it was all done behind the scenes, there was no sort of coherent, rational evaluation process. Doris, you talked about being concerned about process being followed when, when Mr. Gill was first hired, that's where I am today. I want to reiterate, I'm very grateful for the job that he's done, and the board has been right there with him every step of the way in the six years that I've been on the board. Dr. Bullen said this is a bump in the road, I think that's just what it is, the sky is not going to fall today either way. We have, as a board, have not done this right, I don't think, and I don't see a major, a major screwing up, as somebody said, either way, regardless of how this vote goes out. I mean, Mr. Gill will not be a lame duck unless the people in this room make him one. To me, if, if this vote fails, and I don't know what the outcome is going to be, there's plenty of time to revisit, in fact, that would be my recommendation, that we come back with the new board members. Now, a lot of discussion about the new board members and whether or not they'll know enough to make a judgment, it's not my thought that we would, on the first meeting of the new board, make this decision, we'd give them enough time to, to get their feet wet, to get an idea of what Mr. Gill's doing. In fact, we've heard from a couple of board members today who already have a pretty, or candidates for board members, who have a pretty good idea of what they think about Mr. Gill already. So this idea that they're going to be so clueless that it'll take them that long to come up with a rational explanation, a rational decision about this, I just don't, I don't agree with. The contract extension that we're talking about today will be completely within the term of these new board members, and I think as their, as Mr. Gill's employers, two or three of them anyway, of the seven, they need to have some buy-in. With all that said, I move to table the motion.
Second.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I take issue with the fact that things have been done behind the scenes. If they've been done behind the scenes, it's on the other side, not on, not on one side. So, that is an issue that I really take personally, because I don't make phone calls to anyone. And I, and I disagree with that, and that bothers me, and I didn't want to get this far, but that bothers me, that, that is a false accusation.
Well, Rick, I'm not sure how all these people got here.
Did I call any of you?
No, I'm not saying-
I don't think so. So, don't say anything's behind the scenes, I'm talking about behind the scenes on the board.
Well, and you're somewhat misinterpreting what I said, but-
I just disagree with that issue, and I'm just, I'm going to say that right now.
Well, that's fine, but to say that there's been no discussion behind the scenes is not credible, and I'm not saying you called anybody-
You can call anybody here, but you don't, not supposed to call each other, and I'd venture to say there's been a lot of phone calls.
I'd like to know if there have been any calls behind the scenes with respect to the vote, how you're going to vote today.
I certainly appreciate all the speakers today, very eloquent, I wish I was as eloquent as you have been today. I hope my position today is not perceived as an evaluation or a desire for a change in leadership. I certainly don't want you to be a lame duck, Mr. Gill. But, as of this minute, your contract is almost twelve and a half months long, and I, you and I have talked, I came to your office, I told you how I felt, I've talked to many of the audience out here, that I strongly believe with three contested races, that there should be an opportunity, as Dr. Burns says, to have a buy-in on their new employee. And I still feel that way, and again, I've gotten a lot of calls from, several from people in this audience, and I still feel the way that I do, I do now as I did then. And I'm not asking for a change of leadership, but I am asking for an opportunity for these new board members to have a say in their newest employee, and, and that is you, and you're, and everyone's right, you, you are our own employee, our only employee, excuse me, and certainly, I feel like this board as a group, and me individually, we've complimented you, we've praised you, we've praised the central office team you put together, we've praised all of these professionals and all of their, their staff, you've done a wonderful job, and, and we're just so grateful for your passion and your effort in getting that job done. But I personally perceive that we should wait and let the other board members have an opportunity to have a say in this.
Did you make any commitments to anybody that you would wait?
I'm sorry?
Did you make any commitments?
I did talk to some candidates and told them that I would be willing to give them an opportunity to vote, yes, sir.
I'll make one comment, there's a gentleman in this county that I respect as much as anyone. When I first got elected to this board, I sat right in that office in there, and I was asked a question about what I thought I'd do and what I didn't think I'd do, and the gentleman said, I said, "Well, I'm going to do this," and he said, "Well, why?" And I said, "Well, I've made a commitment." And he said, "Little boy," he said, "you don't make commitments in this business, because you don't know what tomorrow brings, you don't commit your votes to anybody, and you vote your conscience when you get there," and that was Mr. Ed Jordan, and if he, if that's not true, that he didn't tell me that, you ask him, will you? So I think, I think you don't make commitments in this business.
I'm voting my conscience, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I guess the only last comment I've got, thinking back from Mr. Blair got on board, before he ran for election, I don't think, I don't think anybody on this board at that time, when we voted for that contract extension, had a problem with you being able to vote. So, I just want everybody to think about that. But, you know, we throw all this, we're throwing this talk up about let, let new members vote on this thing, you know, I've sort of got reservations, I haven't been on the board, it's taken six months or years, about like Mr. Eeks said, six months or years to get going. So, I think it's better to let, let everybody on this board, the ones leaving, since they've been with Mr. Gill, to make this decision, so I still stand on what I said earlier.
There's a motion and a second to table this? I thought we'd voted up or down, but I guess we, I guess we'll just see. Any questions on that?
What is, what is the true meaning of motion to table? Does that end all discussion?
The motion didn't end discussion.
If you, if you vote, the affirmative vote to table the motion today, that'll be end of debate on that issue today, it could be brought up at next future meeting or some subsequent meeting, but if you move, if you, if the vote passes tonight, but with affirmative vote, then at that point, then the motion is tabled for this meeting and comes back up at the next meeting or any subsequent meeting where someone wants to bring it up.
If there's no more discussion on that, we can vote on that.
Well, I'm just concerned about, Mark makes the comment about the time limit, forty-five days prior to an election, you know, once you get inside the forty-five day window, you cannot, this cannot be an issue considered by this board.
That's correct.
So, anything that puts us beyond today removes that ability from this board.
That's correct.
Don?
I have a question for you. Let's read the director's school's contract. Is there a time limit in there that it must be renewed? For instance, if the contract is not renewed three months in advance, or four months in advance, or a year in advance, what's-
There is no language in the contract that says the contract has to be renewed within this, any certain time period. So, it could be renewed up to the last day of that contract, should the board decide to do it, it could be renewed the second day the contract's signed, if the board chose to do it. So there's no restriction one way or the other with respect to any kind of time parameters as to when the contract should be up to be renewed or be renewed.
One other comment. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have the utmost respect for, as I look across this crowd, the people out here. I appreciate their point of view, I appreciate the time that they're taking. And they have, I believe, sincerely spoken from their heart in this situation. And of course, it was talked about the unknown, but you know, from where I sit, it's not an unknown, it's only an unknown if Mr. Gill does something, it's not what I'm going to do. And also, when I look at those evaluations, I've given Mr. Gill high evaluations, and he knows how I feel about some things, and he's even walked by my chair at the end and he said, "How was my last at bat?" You know, at various times. And as far as commitment, I have broken my commitment to myself and my beliefs before to vote an extended contract when I didn't believe it needed. And the situation has changed just a little bit today, I wish that wasn't the case, I don't like this at all, and as Dr. Burns said, this is about as much fun as rezoning. I, I sure, I didn't want it to come to this, and am surprised at Mr. Gill that it has. But the people who have talked with me, and most of them are in this audience, except there are some people in the community that have talked to me that have a different point of view about some things, but I trust these people out here. But I am indeed feel like I'm going, I'm going to vote my conscience today, and, and that's, Mr. Gill, as long as I sit in this chair at the end, I, I don't feel uncomfortable looking at you at the center. So, this is not a vote, as Dr. Burns said, against you, but I'm going to say this, and I make this commitment to all of you now, if this comes up in September, my vote's going to be the same. Now, if it comes up next year, I'd say- Now, if it comes up next year, I'd say, I wouldn't make a complete commitment, but I would say I see no reason that it wouldn't have changed. And, Mr. Gill, that's where I stand. And I don't think I have said a thing that surprises you or surprises the chairman.
I'm not sure I understood everything you said, Don.
Well-
Are you saying that you're voting no today and you're voting no in September?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I didn't say that I would vote no next year.
Well, I mean, if you've got twelve months to go, which is, I think, been my point all along. I mean, it takes six to nine months typically to select a new director, which is part of the reason I think it's being brought up now and the reason that the, that the previous boards had the foresight to extend it a year out. I mean, it's not like you're posting a principal's job, you know. Typically, you have community involvement, you have parents in, you advertise through agencies, it's maybe even a national search. And I don't think you do that generally in, in three or four months' time, is my point.
I understand the process very well, for principals and, and for director of schools. But I also have the experience of sitting on other boards where that there are no contracts at all for the CEO, and they are very responsible people and do an outstanding job, and they do not act or the board accept a lame duck attitude of the people that's, that's the CEO or the people around them. So I don't buy into that at all.
We'll vote on the table, unless somebody else got something to say. I, I will say to everybody out here, you've had two people that committed in the fall. If I were you, I'd hold them to that commitment. But anyway, let's vote. Oh, you got it.
I just, I just got one, one thing I'm having trouble deciphering. Why would you table it? Vote one way or another. Somebody wants to bring it back up, if it gets voted down, do it. But I don't think we need to walk away from here today tabling it.
Anyone else? We'll vote on the table. Unless somebody withdraws them. And that doesn't look like, like it's going to happen, so call roll.
Hey, can we take about a one-minute break? So I can think about what, what I want to do in advance of this vote? Because I might make it easy on all of y'all.
It's up to the board.
I'm ready.
Get some water here, will ya?
Take a one-minute break.